Let us all pray. Almost gracious and happy to Father, we come and thank you more for allowing us to be here today. We gather together as a city of residents. We come now to hear from our leader, from the mayor of this city. We ask now, God, that you will continue to guide us as we continue to do the work that you have called each of us to do in this city. We ask, God, that you will continue to bless every household that is in at least 4.2 square miles. God, we ask that you keep us ever reminded that we are among the human race and that we together will make things better. God, we ask for now, God, that you open up our minds and our hearts, that we might receive the words that are going to come before us. God, that we might know what our duties and responsibilities are to move the city forward, to encourage the young and to take care of the elderly, and to be good citizens, compassionate, and also having mercy to each one of us. God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in this place as we come to look forward to the future of our city. This we pray, in Jesus' name, that everyone say, "Amen."
Amen.
Please be seated. Sir, I believe that's Congress members?
Yes, Governor President. March 14th, 2018, 7 o'clock p.m. in City Council chambers. I look forward to delivering this brief and briefing to the City Council. Respectfully, Richard Thomas, Mayor of City of Mount Vernon, C.C., Deborah Reynolds, Controller, C.C., Lawrence McCary, Corporation Council. That's easy communication, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Brown. So, in a moment, I will formally introduce the mayor, but let me address a few housekeeping rules. I'm told the speech will be less than an hour. During that time, no questions will be asked, and I respectfully request that everyone is also respectful during the remarks. At the conclusion of the speech, as you can see, we have monitors and such, we're going to dismount that, and then we'll go into the regular order of our City Council meeting, which will start with the speakers, referrals, and then our legislation. And if you feel that you cannot stand, and I know it's awfully cold in here, there are seats available downstairs in the Rose Center. And this... Oh, and gentlemen, please remove your hats. So, at this time, I'm going to call on Ayanna Smash to do the national anthem, and after such time, I will introduce the mayor. Mrs. Smash, everyone please stand.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Ooh, the broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight! Oh, the round parts we watched were so gallantly shrieking! And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air! Gave proof through the night that our love was still there! Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Ooh, the broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight! Oh, the round parts we watched were so gallantly shrieking! And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air! Gave proof through the night that our love was still there! Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Councilman Duarte.
Present.
Councilman Parkinson.
Here.
Councilman Griffith.
Present.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Council President Copeland.
Present. So, it's good to see so many of you here. I wish you had the time and attendance at our regular meetings. But through my prior life, 18, almost 18 years here, and prior return, I have found, in government, you start with where you agree, and then you work towards the hard things. So, myself and the mayor have been working and meeting behind the scenes, trying to work on things that we agree on and this body agrees on. So, I'm happy to say we found some common ground. Not all the time, but we found some common ground. A couple of months ago, I had the opportunity, along with the Vice President of American Christmas, to travel abroad to their headquarters in Austria. And it's a great opportunity that I think this will boost the economy, as a Controller, once we've worked the numbers. And we recently had a follow-up meeting, myself and Bob Soloff, who's the Vice President of American Christmas, and we have some great opportunities here, and I'm happy, at this time, to introduce our mayor to come present the state of the city. Very proud. My colleague, so that you can see I'm going to remain here, but he likes to sit so you can see. You want to speak something, please. My colleague, like I said, the seats are reserved in front.
We begin.
It's my honor and pleasure to address the people of Mount Vernon and tell them about the state of our city. Miss Strong. The City Council President. City Council President Copeland, thank you for your introduction and your remarks, especially about the economic travel that you took on for the city. Because bringing jobs and bringing new ideas forward to fruition is really what we need to be doing, not just as a governor, but as a community and as a city. So, American Christmas, MK Illumination, get ready for unleashing imagination on our streets in a major way. That's going to move tourism and make Mount Vernon not just a place, but a major destination again. So, thank you again. We see, Council members, thank you so much for welcoming me here tonight. Controller, thank you for joining us. Before I get started, I have to thank God, and I want to start by reading Scripture, Matthew 5, verses 9 through 12. It says, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God; blessed are those who are persecuted because of righteousness' sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven; blessed are you when people insult you, persecute you, and falsely say all kinds of evil against you because of me; rejoice and be glad, because great is your reward in heaven, for in the same way they persecuted the prophets who were for you." I have to take my wife's chairs. Chairs, please stand. We have been together for 18 years. She's now the mother of my child, children, excuse me. Who are five. They're two, and they're going to the Mount Vernon City Public School, so everybody. But she's my best friend, she's my rock, my anchor. She and I have been through so much, trials and tribulations, and all I can say is I love you so much. I can't thank you enough. I also have to thank Ambassador Andrew Young, who was rock steady with Dr. Martin Luther King. And I have to thank him for sharing his words of encouragement with me throughout this process. And just from someone who has seen some really dark days, telling me that there's light ahead, was truly encouraging and inspiring. So, I have to thank Ambassador Young and all those just like him, from the culture class around town, to the churches, synagogues, all the outreach and outpouring of love and support. I want to say thank you, Walt. So, to address the elephant in the room, and not the two Republicans that are here. Earlier this week, accusations were made by Attorney General Erich Schreiner against me. Let me just say upfront, the allegations are false. They stem from campaign rules and regulations and have nothing to do with my tenure as mayor and have nothing to do with how I've conducted myself as mayor. Since the people of Mount Vernon voted in 2015 for a 35-year-old, lifelong native son on the south side of the city to move Mount Vernon forward. You learn a lot when you run for mayor, and one thing is how much campaign finance laws are in need of reform. They are vague, confusing, and contradictory. It's always my intention to do what is legal and ethical. Throughout the campaign, I was advised by council, so I'm confident that when all this is sorted out, I'll be fully vindicated. I have great confidence in our legal system, and I have no doubt that I will be proven innocent in my campaign and full compliance. I encourage people to work within the system. From our seniors to our kids, if you see something wrong, bring it to the people that are responsible for fixing them. That includes me or Attorney General Schreiner. The bottom line is, we have to have faith in the system, and I want what is best for Mount Vernon. So, with that... So, with that, let me tell you how the city is responding to the needs of our residents and how I will continue to govern as your mayor. My goal within the next hour is to tell you how Mount Vernon is moving forward. And let me start by talking about the compass we are using to move us forward. Now, Mount Vernon is only 4.4 square miles, but it's a tricky place to navigate sometimes. You know, expanded GPS won't get the job done. You need a compass that, you know, is working for you, one that means the most for the 70,000 people that are calling Mount Vernon home. Our compass has five guideposts, and we call them the Five Cs. They are community, competence, communication, compassion, and capital. Community encompasses all the actions we take to enhance our quality of life. Competence focuses on delivering services that are affordable, responsive, and effective. Communication keeps the city informed and engaged. Compassion is never forgetting that the business of government is raising people up, not bringing them down. Especially when people need it most. Capital covers the ideas and the resources we use to invest in our future. So, let's see how our state of the city measures up. So, community, there's nothing more important than the quality of life of our community. Public safety being the most important. We know that crime is public enemy number one, and the very good news is that Mount Vernon continues to grow safer. But some sad news is that just last night, someone did lose their life to illegal gun and drug activity, and that's something that we've been working very hard to eradicate on our streets. So, I ask that we pause for a moment of silence for this young person that did lose their life to senseless violence on our streets last night. This unfortunate tragic event does tell us that we have more work to do ahead, but as we look back, we can see that serious crime is down 32% since 2011. And it's not just me saying it. The statistics from the Mount Vernon Police Department on an annual basis confirm it. Each week, the Mount Vernon Police Department tracks seven major crimes, and the results are published on my blog at medium.comapatmayorrichthomas, so they're available for the public to see. This is transparency that lets everyone track our progress. The weekly reports are compiled into annual reports, and here are the results for 2017. Across the seven major categories, all the bad stuff that can happen to people and property has dropped by 32%. You can clap for that. Down in every category. So, Chart One, as you can see, it shows 32% drop is dramatic, but even more important, it's continuous. Chart Two, crime is down 3% from 2016, down 8% from 2015, down 10% from 2014, down 29% since 2013, down 23% since 2012, and 32% since 2011. This is real progress. This is real progress. Safer streets and neighborhoods, and the results were achieved by building a new era of trust between the police and the community. And it didn't happen by accident. We have the right leadership in place. In January, after a nationwide search and all the recommendation of our citizens' group, Commissioner Sean Harris, born and raised here to become one of Mount Vernon's finest, was permanently installed in our top police post as Commissioner. Other leadership appointments were made as well, but good policing requires the right fit with the community, and we have that here in Mount Vernon. We also have strong management practices in place. For example, each week, I meet with the Commissioner and top brass to go over everything from top to bottom in the police department to make sure that we're doing everything we can to improve and that the rank and file are receiving all the resources and training that they need to continue to do their job safer and better every day. And we have the right partnerships in place to do just that. These partners include the FBI, the DEA, the Bureau of Alcohol, Firearms, Tobacco, the MTA Police, the NYPD, State and County Police, and the District Attorney. It's through these partnerships that we greatly leverage our capabilities to catch, convict, and incarcerate. Another key partner is the Mount Vernon School District. No initiative is more important than our School Resource Officer Program, where men and women from our police department serve as protectors, role models, and most importantly, friends to our children. Our outreach also includes the police department's Community Immersion Program, as well as programs of Coffee with a Cop, and this is why you see many of our officers walking around the streets, shaking hands, because they're focused on knocking down barriers, knocking on doors, and promoting dialogue. No safety shield is greater than the two-way trust between the community and our police officer. And moving into 2018, the city's crime-fighting capabilities will get a major boost from 15 new officers. I have to thank the new City Council for making sure that the department got better funded, because the overall result is a safer Mount Vernon. Safer for our kids, safer for our families. So, thanks to our police department and law enforcement. It's no accident that as crime has gone down, property values have gone up. And when you think about that relationship, you also have to think about fire insurance rates becoming more generous, because we have a much bigger, stronger, braver fire department. They're doing record calls of service. They are doing it with equipment that is on its last legs, but they're doing the job day in, day out. So, I have to say thank you to the bravest who are here with us today. So, for homeowners, you can see this dynamic duo as the safety dividend, because the numbers show it. The median price of a single-family home in Mount Vernon as of January was $400,000. That's up from $365,000 a year ago, a gain of 10%. Condo prices are up over 25%. That's a big jump from $185,000 to $234,000. Even COAs posted to the media. But there's more good news for homeowners, because the number of homes on market are shrinking, and that means prices go up. Homeowners are receiving also 95% of their asking prices. This speaks directly to Mount Vernon's desirability as a place to live and raise a family. Safety catalyzes quality of life, and quality of life sends property values higher. The Mount Vernon community is on the rise. So, I want to say thank you for all the work you've done, all the people who've contributed to making this happen. Let's turn to competence. Just like fighting crime as a team sport, so is running government. We have a new Controller, Deborah Reynolds. We have a new City Council President, Council President Copeland. And two new City Council Members, Janice Duarte and Delia Parkinson. We join our incumbents, Marcus Griffith and Andre Wallace. As elected officials, the people of Mount Vernon have placed their finger on us to manage the city. It is our responsibility to ensure that each tax dollar returns value. As mayor's, my job is to set the mission and vision. The Controller and council provide insight and oversight. Through dialogue, we can move forward. Dialogue can include disagreement, and let's be real, nobody brings more passion to disagreement than Mount Vernon. Like, yeah, you're tough, yeah, come on, man. We love our city. And that's okay, because we do love our city. It shows that we care enough to get into the arena, but we can't allow our passion to paralyze us, because collaboration is the antidote. In January, I sent to the council a list of initiatives for us to move forward on together, and on top of that list is the cable TV contract. Now, this is a no-brainer, because everyone wins. The new cable TV contract will pay the city $1 million. And it will lower bills for residents, especially our seniors. Down from $275 a month, down to about $20 a month. That's a deal. It will increase internet speeds and eliminate data caps, so all you teenagers get ready, right? But also enable private access broadcasting from City Hall. I'm pretty ready to assist the council in getting the cable contract signed. The emphasis is on eager. You know, I'm often asked, what are we waiting for when I go to the Dole Center? The time is now to give the people of Mount Vernon a cable contract. But I'm really looking forward to working with the City Council on a comprehensive plan. The city's development potential has never been greater, but a smart and strategic development requires a blueprint, not a haphazard approach, which we've been subject to. At its heart, the comprehensive plan will balance the many and varied needs of our city. It will ensure fairness, protect integrity, create transparency, speed, results, and demonstrate professionalism. A comprehensive plan also makes it easier to protect the city. A comprehensive plan also makes it easier to protect the city in case of emergencies. So Con Edison made an epic fail for the way they managed the recent power outages earlier this month. Give it a thumbs down, right? It's time for Con Edison to put its electrical wires underground. This is the twenty-first century, and Con Edison must move into the twenty-first century. A comprehensive plan will help speed that transition, but after dialogue earlier today with Council President Copeland, we reached an accord in developing joint legislation to pass a local law requiring Con Edison to underground their cables over the next ten to fifteen years here in the city of Mount Vernon. And we're also supporting Supervisor Paul Finer's effort to achieve a New York State tax credit for homeowners that want to invest in whole-house generators that were left in the dark and abandoned, because its electrical liability is essential. So that's something that we look forward to advocating in Albany for, because it's very important that the lights stay on. So I'm asking all the leaders in the community for their input on this, because again, we stand ready in any way to work together with our council and our comptroller to reduce documents, legislation, that preserves our proud past and gives our residents the future that they want and deserve. Part of competence is compliance. As the eighth-largest city in New York State, Mount Vernon has obligations, and these obligations must be met every day, so that we protect the health, safety, and financial well-being of our residents. For too many years, Mount Vernon treated too many of these obligations as options. Government is not a restaurant menu, where you get to pick and choose what you want to pay for, what you don't. As the chief elected officer of the city, I can tell you that Mount Vernon must deliver all of the services that it is obligated to provide, be it financial, legal, and environmental. Many of our conversations with the comptroller and council members since January have been around the understanding of the consequences if we fail to act on these very important initiatives. So our actions and our inactions count every day. But one of three of our most delayed obligations, progress is being made. So I want to talk about HUD. A top-to-bottom audit of our urban renewal agency is underway to sort through years of mismanagement. Things are so bad that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development had threatened to cut off our funding. Community development block grants, I mean, it can't be overstated how critical CBG funds are. The money fills gaps to help pay for after-school programs, meals on wheels, programs for our seniors, our kids. And just a couple of weeks ago, the city council chambers were packed just like this, advocating for CBG funds to be allocated toward different community needs. Even with the millions from the federal government, there's never enough funding to meet all of the demand that's out there. But if you take that away, we'll have a full-out disaster on our streets. So in recent months, because of our good-faith efforts to fix the broken system, promote transparency, and protect the public good, and be good stewards of public dollars, HUD has agreed to keep funds flowing during the year. Once the audit results are in, we will take all the steps necessary to bring the URA into full compliance with all HUD regulations and guidelines. We believe that money, millions of dollars, is owed to the city. Or it may have been misused, and we must get to the bottom of it. There's no option here. Only compliance will ensure the future flow of CBG dollars into our community. So we'll keep proposing, especially as this year's grant awards will be announced in the coming weeks. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge Commissioner O'Connor, Deputy Commissioner Bolivar, Deputy Commissioner Molina for their hard work. Look, it's Wocan, Mount Vernon's a new Wocan, all right? We're also making progress on our sewers. In November of last year, our DPW started work on the sewers around the Third Street Bridge near the Hutchinson River to bring that into compliance as well. Now, I'm pleased to report that the modernization of the project to lay two thousand feet of new twenty-four-inch pipe is already complete. Working with the State Department of Transportation, we finished the project in half the time and half the cost. But more importantly is that there was a homeowner that was displaced because of the disgusting mess that had been ignored for fourteen years. She was ran out of her home at November during Thanksgiving. She was pushed out, forced out. And just right after the new year, we were able to get her back into her home because of the hard work that was done by our DPWs. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work. That's delivering results, and there's so much more. In January, using everything from brooms to shovels to giant front-end loaders, DPW began to clean up its yard off of Santa Boulevard. Again, this was to fulfill a consent agreement to comply with state and federal environmental standards. The result will be transformative. A garage, gas tanks, parking lot, and salt shed sprawled across twenty acres will be consolidated into two. And the land, the waterfront, will be reopened to Mount Vernon, to become Mount Vernon Shores, a park with ball fields, a jogging trail, and bike pathways that will extend up to Wilson Woods Pool all the way from Target and beyond. We'll also have boat access, and we're working on bringing a ferry from Mount Vernon to City Island and then Oyster Bay. So people, welcome. And this will be the first time that the public will gain access to the Hutch River in a hundred and twenty-five years. Years of inaction is finally being replaced with action. It has taken fourteen years, but the rethinking, repositioning, rejuvenating Mount Vernon is working, and it's underway. No, I'm looking for my, there you go. There will even be sand. This sand, yes, so JB Smooth joked about bringing the beach to Mount Vernon, right? Now he has to bring an Oscar, because this is coming, this is coming, all right? Love you, JB. Now, I really do, he's a good dude from Mount Vernon. Let's give it to JB Smooth. But this sand is from Montego Bay, courtesy of Mr. Bailey, and courtesy from the ex. And it comes with a pledge from Jamaica's Prime Minister. The Prime Minister of Barbados and Anguilla have all committed to bring sand to Mount Vernon shores. And the sandboxes that are going to be in our parks throughout the community to plant island culture firmly in the hands of our children and our seniors who can share their heritage and tradition, that is big. The prospects are really exciting, and I invite everyone to be a part of this renaissance. But frankly, one of the reasons Mount Vernon had compliance issues in the past is that our approach to governing had only one speed, and that was crisis management. So it's time to get the city on a more normal footing with a firmer financial foundation. And I ask everybody to take a look at this new video.
This is a story about crisis and the actions taken to reverse it. Prior to two thousand sixteen, the outgoing mayor had slashed the budgets of key departments. To make matters worse, the former comptroller constantly delayed and refused to pay bills. Things got so bad that at one point, during a snowstorm, the DPW had no money to put gas in its pile trucks. So the new mayor went to court to force the comptroller to pay the city's bills. And he won, but the legal revenue took months. In the meantime, the city faced a crisis. Some departments didn't have enough money to operate. Take the case of the Building Department. Essential positions had been slashed. This meant the Building Department did not have enough people to do safety inspections and process permits. Few inspections put residents at risk and reduced the city's revenue. This at a time when homeowners and businesses were already overburdened with high taxes. Mount Vernon relies on property taxes to pay a whopping fifty-seven percent of its bills, much higher than white planes in New York City. To stop the madness, the mayor asked the city's industrial development agency for help. The job of the IDA is to promote and safeguard the economic vitality of the city. Immediately, consultants from the IDA teamed up with city workers. The culture changed and concrete results flowed. The turnaround was impressive. Safety and finances improved. In the case of the La Porte Apartments on Grandington Avenue, a lawsuit over safety was resolved, with the city getting three hundred thousand dollars from the developer for improvements to Harley Park and other city activities. Building Department revenues also bounced back to over a million dollars. The solution worked, but now it's time to move away from the reliance on the IDA. The mayor is asking the comptroller and the city council to properly fund all of our departments in two thousand and eighteen. It's just common sense. When departments are properly staffed, essential services strengthen, and the tax burden eases. The results for residents are higher property values and a better quality of life. Working together is how Mount Vernon marches forward.
And we are working together. Serious conversations are underway. And, you know, the comptroller, the city council, you heard it, all I can say is thank you for just having the dialogue. It's been two long years, but we're here, and I believe that by dialogue, we'll be able to address whatever shortages the departments have through the city budget and move away from the reliance on the IDA to prop each of the departments up. It's wrong for our residents, but the decision is right for our future. It's people's safety, it's people's investment, it's their homes, it's inspectors that need to be on our streets doing the right thing with the right tools, and the right time is right now to fund these departments. So I ask you to please work with us to make sure that we can hire the right people to work within our city agencies. And this is essential, because if Mount Vernon is to build back its reputation as a place where timetables are met and enforcement is objective and consistent, that's something that we must get done, and we cannot get it done without a firm financial foundation. Underneath our departments, they need it, because we have to break this cycle of perpetual crisis management. The good old boring, dull, mundane management is how we deliver steady, competent government. So we have to get back to that speed. Now, communication. Communication flows naturally from competent government, and one of our fundamental obligations is to keep people informed. To get the word out from City Hall, we have activated a number of resources. The easiest way to stay informed is to read our weekly report, as you can see it on the screen. It's a summary of the highlights of the week, and it's packaged in an easy-to-read format with headlines, pictures, and links to articles and videos. It appears on the homepage of the city's website at cmvny.com, under the banner Mayor's Weekly Reports. Or better yet, you can get your own copy sent directly to you if you become a subscriber to the email list. Just hit the subscribe button, link at the top right of the screen. It's just that easy. But for more immediate news, you can also follow us on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. I don't do Snapchat, I'm sorry. Just don't do Snapchat. Anyway, let me see. Although it may be not the newest technology, but radio. Radio is a main state communication tool for us. Tuesday mornings at seven-thirty a.m. and Friday at five, Fridays at five, you can listen and talk to me on WVOX. That's one four six zero, fourteen sixty on the AM dial. Throughout the week, I visit other local stations as well. But communication works best when it's two ways, and radio is a way that we're able to deliver that. So we get feedback in real time, we get good, bad, gloves on, gloves off. We appreciate the dialogue, no matter what, because it helps make the city better. But if you want to write us, you can email us at mayertomass@cmvny.com, and we'll be staying in touch. You just need to let us know what pothole needs to be filled, what sidewalk needs to be leveled, what streetlight needs to be turned on. Speaking of streetlights, I'm proud to share that all the streetlights in the city will be replaced in the next year, and we're doing it through the New York State Power Authority, not a prior arrangement that didn't work well for Mount Vernon. So I'm really excited to see that happen. Now compassion, I want to go to compassion, because government exists because of our collective strength is much bigger, better, and stronger than any one individual. It's how it's how well our government protects the most vulnerable, and it's how we are measured, not just in the realm of the flesh, but the realm of the spirit. Mount Vernon is tested every day. One area where the need is great is hunger. In a country and city, there are people that go hungry. In Mount Vernon, almost twenty-five percent of our residents don't always know where their next meal is going to come from and cherish it. Some of my family members can tell you that I was one of those kids, not knowing. Sometimes I have roaches crawl out of my iron. Studying late at Dunkin' Donuts on Grandington to make sure that I can get ready for the SATs or some other debate while going through high school. The gap in hunger comes to three million meals a year. Three million. But I want to show you how we're working to fight it.
In July of two thousand seventeen, Mayor Richard Thomas started the Mount Vernon Fresh Market Produce Distribution Program, which is a partnership between the Food Bank of Westchester and the city of Mount Vernon. About fifty families came out to our first distribution. It's now over two hundred families. Every two weeks, we focus on the growth rate. With the low poverty, and Mayor Thomas is doing everything he can to lower that number.
It's so good for those in between, because there's so many families that they lose their jobs, and they have to go back home and live on their mother, live on their grandmother. So these programs lift us.
If you don't have a friend in Philly who's high, they can trick you down a little more.
From like going grocery shopping, you can save a whole lot of money going grocery shopping. A month.
Our distributions are every other Friday afternoon from four p.m. to six p.m. to make it as convenient as possible for people who are working. It's also a good time for socializing. In the cold months, we are here at the Gold Center. In the warmer months, we are in the parking lot off Prospect across from Food Town. In the warmer months, we are in the parking lot off Prospect across from Foodtown. What's so great about our program is that we are putting healthy food into the bags and baskets of the people who come each week.
The impact is that children are able to also pay much more attention to school. Also, the families are able to provide for their children, and mothers and fathers are not feeling as pressured in order to be able to just allow their children to have nutritious meals.
I can tremendously say I've seen great improvements in my health. I've lost a little weight. Fresh food is hard to find. And you need the fresh food to provide the nutrients at the body.
But it's very good for the elderly, most of all, and for the young people.
It's nice to know we're helping. None of this would be possible without volunteers.
I like to do things for people, and you know how people, you know? I've always been that way my life, 62 years old, and I enjoy helping people.
This makes me feel like they're supplementing their groceries. Children are unable to eat. And we need more of this.
You've been able to address hunger in a major way. We're on track to cut a third of hunger in the city of Mount Vernon. And we're so excited because there's just as much giving as there is receiving. And we are just very thankful and grateful for the relationship. And we're getting it done in a simple way, hands-on, and helping people. Thank you, Shane Brooks. This is the work that we do to make sure we take care of Mount Vernon and the new Wakanda. I can tell you, I think it's just amazing men for doing this. They both took up the challenge and got it rocking. So all I can say is let's keep rolling. Thank you so much, guys. I bet you there's an over-under on how many Wakandas I do right now. I bet you she's being led by fiery new president Kevin Hall. In our country, governments don't have feelings or hearts, but people do. And there's no better example of how we can partner with government to show compassion than our food pantry programs. And one more point I just have to say, in addition to the pantry, we deliver meals daily to homes of more than 140 seniors. We're putting a big dent into hunger. Now, the fifth ring is capital. We're almost there, ladies and gentlemen, I promise. We're almost done. How am I doing at that one-hour mark? Investing capital wisely is how we ensure the future of Mount Vernon for all of our residents. Put the right ideas together with enough money, and people will be knocking on the door. Mount Vernon's growth prospects has never been greater. And affordability, accessibility make Mount Vernon a prime target for transit-oriented development. Our costs are much cheaper than New York City. Rents and taxes are both lower, believe it, they are. And Mount Vernon is a gateway to anywhere goods or people need to get. No other municipality can boast that we have three Metro North train stations. Easy access to the subways, buses, and major highways. We also have a port, an industrial port. The next port, industrial port, is 180 miles away, upstate New York. We have what we need to succeed, and we should never be afraid to stick our necks out to Affordability, excuse me, affordability and accessibility create value. And this is exactly what millennials, entrepreneurs, mompreneurs, artists, empty nesters, small manufacturers all want. Attracting investment requires partnerships, especially in older urban cities like Mount Vernon. And this is where our industrial development agency, whose prime role is to safeguard and invigorate our local economy, comes into play. Make no mistake, plenty of Mount Vernon is doing just fine. And just last week, the New York Times Real Estate Section outed us and said that we are a hidden paradise. Wow. It's true. In fact, all around the city, people come up to me constantly and say, "Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we don't need any more development. We're done. Traffic congestion, we don't need it." I get it. I hear you. I understand. But other parts of the city are starving for the best. Desperate for revitalization. The challenge is that in the places where investment is needed, in the streets with zombie buildings, boarded-up storefronts, attracting capital is most difficult. The reason is no secret. Developers are good at arithmetic. To say in business or to stay in business, they need to make money. Distressed properties are risky. If the numbers don't work, they stay away. That's where the IDA comes in. The IDA can provide financial incentives to make the numbers work, not just for developers, but for Mount Vernon. The most common incentive is called pilots or payments in lieu of taxes. Not everyone is a fan of pilots, only on airplanes. Critics like the school district argue that the city, which struggles to make ends meet, should not give tax breaks to anyone, and certainly not developers. But let me explain why pilots are vital to Mount Vernon's economic growth. First, they're not giveaways. Each tax break must be justified. The IDA does this by engaging third-party experts to review and conduct a full cost-benefit analysis to make sure that the costs are outweighed by the benefits contributing to our economic resurgence. And what's helpful is knowing that we have a great team that's been focused on moving the city forward. But what's not helpful is costly litigation, unnecessary between the city and the school district. It's like our residents suing each other. The objective is not for the lawyers to get rich. The objective is for the residents, property owners, our children, the next generation, to get rich. To pass that wealth down, that heritage and tradition, not waste time fighting each other. Life is gift. We have to rally around and combat our shared enemy, economic stagnation. So let's talk about some facts. Fact: The bills to run city and its schools never get smaller. Fact: Taxpayers are already overburdened. Fact: Sustaining services requires new sources of revenue. In short, if we don't grow, we perish. And I invite the school district and everybody out there to read, "Who Moved My Cheese?" Oh, "Who Moved the Cheese?", alright? Great story. It is a good story, for management purposes as well. But I'm proud to say we're growing. Evidence is all around us. Companies are investing capital and creating jobs. Just today, Ace Natural, a leading distributor of organic foods, will be moving more than 40 jobs to Mount Vernon. Invested millions in its new location on East Sanford Boulevard. So congratulations to all those Blue Apron customers. You've got one of your suppliers right here in the city of Mount Vernon. 22 Southwest Street is a mixed-use development for 4,000 square feet of commercial retail space and 189 apartments adjacent to the Mount Vernon West Train Station. Beyond that, is a five-building development on the question Parkway, adjacent to the Fleetwood Metro North Train Station. 179 market rate units. 42 Broad Street is the city's first luxury apartment complex in decades. It will create 249 market rate units and enhance the Fleetwood parking garage. So to the developers that are behind these projects, thank you for your faith in Mount Vernon. Thank you for doing business and helping to grow our city. But there's one project that must move forward. That's Library Square. The idea, the idea is to create a downtown transit-oriented arts district on the south side of Mount Vernon. Full fat, we're coming back for it. This will be situated around the library and the old YMCA, near the Mount Vernon East Train Station. The anchor will be a 320-unit complex with market and affordable apartment units. This will be built on the site of the old YMCA. Remember, they left town. They closed their doors on us. So we have to rebuild and build something bigger and better that's going to deliver for our future. It will feature state-of-the-art green technology, including small shops selling goods and services of artists living in the building. There will also be performance rehearsal, display space for music and dance and the arts. What also really unique is the ability to pay the way for rent, pay the way for some of the subsidies. Tenants, they will be able to gear their skills, I'll take it with the artist, and turn their skills into hours of community service. That's what we want. That's how we build up each other. That's how we enrich our community. That's how we create and bring more authenticity, creativity, and compassion to our streets. This is a project that will infuse the neighborhood with their hip and youthful vibe. And it will inject dollars, new dollars, into an area that just is barren of investment. With great success, the developer that brought this very concept to Harlem can bring this same concept to Mount Vernon. So I'll ask Carl Brown to stand up for him. The project is before the city council, and my strong pleas that the council move forward quickly on the necessary rezoning and through the partnership with Council President Copeland, the $1.2 million sale of the YMCA to the developers. That's a big deal. Remember, there was like some rumors, 175 grand? I mean, it's now 1.2 million. So you could tap. But seriously, city council, we hope you perform the due diligence. And remember that time is money and the opportunity to bring arts, music, new opportunities for even the PJS Jazz Society to find places for their kids to live or themselves to live and perfect their craft is here in the city of Mount Vernon. So we look forward to attracting and developing even intellectual capital, but especially with respect to our seniors, which is a part of our senior U program, but also with our youth, which is part of the mayor's scholarship program. And this initiative gives $2,000 a year to students in two-year and four-year colleges and vocational schools. This year's scholarship will double the amount from last year, and it confirms our commitment to making sure we invest in education. But to encourage a scholarship, the Youth Bureau has after-school programs in 12 locations, STEAM, Academics of Science, Technology, Engineering, and the Arts, and math. We have summer camp for 500 kids that are going to be offered by our recreation department. And applications for Youth Bureau jobs are on the city's website. In addition, our youth sports programs will provide year-round activities. And right now, it is time to sign up for baseball. Baseball registration is free. We're nearing the final stretch, by the way. But this is a big deal because the registration for baseball is free. Many parents cannot afford to pay some of the costs associated for their kids to play. So everybody is welcome to sign up and play ball. It's a big deal because our kids need to be outdoors, not trapped inside, destroying But it's not just for kids. Get ready for Universal Circus. It's coming back. Last year, last year attracted, last year, Universal Circus attracted, attracted over 60,000 people to come to their event in Mount Vernon. This was their first time in 25 years abandoning their prior location in the Bronx. Pick up to the Bronx. But we ran shuttles from subways, Metro North Train Station, and got people there. People as far away as Orange County came down to be a part and enjoy the experience. So we invite all of Westchester County, all of the region to get ready to come back and have fun at Universal Circus. And as a millennial, I will say we do things a little differently. We do believe this has our tradition calls and a lot of fun. So City Fest is coming back this September, which attracted over 15,000 people. The annual pumpkin blaze, the annual pumpkin blaze, as well as the winter wonderland. But no stay of the city will be complete without talking about Memorial Field. Memorial Field is iconic. The Jackson Five. Me, Joe Green. Legendary high school sports rivalries. For generations, Memorial Field has been one of our greatest memory generators. Not just for our city, but the entire region. It was the Barclays center of its time. It's also a place where character is built. Great athletes who want to grow up to be great athletes learn valuable lessons of victory and defeat, like our Razorbacks, have all learned these lessons, including sportsmanship. Memorial Field defines the fabric of Mount Vernon pride. But sadly, for far too long, for an unconscionable length of time, the gates of Memorial Field have been locked. And it's nice to see the Journal News recently called for investigation. Better late than never. Whether outright fraud or fiasco of the century, it's important to unlock the truth of what really happened with the dumping of dirty dirt at Aldele Park. No action has been taken, only our court action to try and bring those who may be involved to court. And I'm calling on everyone to please join us in this hunt to bring accountability to those that disgraced Mount Vernon. My commitment is immediate. Memorial Field will reopen this summer. Our plan is to have grass and eight-lane track open to the public this summer. A final design will take more time, but while the planners, accountants, lawyers, and the regulators sort all that out, there is no good reason for Memorial Field to remain shut. Memorial Field will reopen this summer because it must. We owe it to our city's kids, our parents. We owe it to our city's kids, our parents, our grandparents. It's time to restore our legacy. It's time to introduce a new generation to Memorial Field. And I have to thank Commissioner Nygro and his team for everything that they're doing to get Memorial Field ready. Not just for the D P W R, not just for everything they do to keep our streets clean, not just because they do everything to plow the snow, but this man is literally operating machinery on all of these projects because he is not a virgin. And really, really, I want to thank the council for funding, important roles in the D P W. Just know that the work, the dedication, the passion will not change, it's only going to grow stronger. And we can add more and do more like paving every city road as we call and convene the Capital Projects Committee this coming spring to get down to business, to defining not just how we're going to repave every road, level every sidewalk, but bring back major infrastructure investments into our city. That's something that we have to do, but I really look forward to seeing all of you at Memorial Field this summer. The end of tonight where we began with the five Cs. Community, competence, communication, compassion, and capital. The five Cs will keep us moving forward and our progress will not go unchallenged. But we will not be stopped. These five navigational stars will keep us focused on doing the most important work for the people of Mount Vernon. And that's why we're here to give the people of Mount Vernon the city they want, the safe city they deserve, the city they can be proud of every day. The city that I love, the city where I was born and raised and publicly educated, the city where I was ever convinced my wife to move from the other country, Long Island. Here. This is our home. And on behalf of everyone at City Hall, I just want to say it's an honor to serve. Working together, we can't be stopped. Working together, we can secure a better future. Working together, we'll move Mount Vernon forward.
Just before we go, we're going to do the vendiction. May the God of endurance and encouragement grant you to live in such harmony with one another. Such a powerful word. Father, we thank you on tonight for the state of the city, Mount Vernon, the city that has moved forward. Father, we thank you for our mayor, the honor of Richie Thomas, every member of the city council, our controller, every department that is represented here. God, we ask that you continue to bless the city of Mount Vernon as we move forward. Hand in hand, we will build together. And so Lord will not be like those at the World of Babylon that we crumble, but together we unite and we can stand together to build a great Mount Vernon. Father, we thank you on tonight. Bless us now as we go and all new people, we thank you in Jesus's name and all God's people say.
Mr. Stefan Ritter. And please you have four minutes to speak. After three minutes, the buzzer will go off and you have a minute to resume. And when you come up to the mic, microphone, please make your name and address for the record.
Mr. Ritter. My name is Stefan Ritter. I'm originally from 41 South Manhattan Avenue. Now retired at 252 by Mount Vernon, New York. Don't get tricked by everything that you see here because when you stood up and you saluted the flag and said to the Republican in which the flag represents, because that was flag, it's not here which it represents. Then when you seen the young lady sing, she told you who we were. We were the free and the land of the brave. So we have two entities that they trying to convince together to make one out of everything. So they wanted to eliminate the I D A and that's a part of the facility.
Mr. Ritter, hold on, just start.
We haven't started.
No, we haven't started.
We rolled already. That's going to do this that way.
I've got the flag.
So now, so now all of the entities that's inside the building that are closed belong to us, the ones that originally from the land, the land of the free, the free, that's us. And now we got to understand that they have all our paperwork and every office in this building is only a middle substance, a middle agency to the original, like the veterans office. They have our paperwork all screwed up and then I have a copy right there too, where I came out of there with a general. It's other than honorable, within honorable, and it's not a final discharge. So I was still getting paid from the fifteenth and the first until I came back here. So now there's a copy of it right here. And as you can see, I was, we have four pages to a D D two fourteen. And it has three more connected papers where you can see that this is a phony piece of paperwork. And you see it says not a fine discharge in the paperwork right there. So now I'm coming into where these, these charges that was presented against your mayor right here, these charges right here, it's over 23 different charges about Renegades Gate of Man, February 12th, 2007.
Are you hearing these papers?
Yeah. So yeah, I'll say the record. Now I'm coming to you to present myself, Stefan Ritter. I'm a private general from the United States Marine. I'm all American, five star, all American, offense and defense. I'm also all county. I also have to figure out that they are a city entity. You have the city patrol, the city police, you have the city council, you have the city district court, you have a city that represents the Republicans. We are not the publicans on this Capitol right here. I have I D, everybody could pull out their I D and you could see our I D says New York State. So when you condense a city with the New York State Federal Supreme Beers of the universe and then you have them taking advantage of us, they bringing sand from Jamaica, they bringing this from Ethiopia, they doing this from New York City, they doing everything, but it's nothing for us as the free and the brave. And that's what I'm wanting to represent us from the exits and the center of the park in Mount Vernon projects. And it's surrounded by four pillows of rest. It also has five projects around it that represents nine. When you look at the number nine, you're looking at the highest number in the world before the numbers reduce themselves from the one and the zero from which you started. So now we come into the, tell you the names of the four corners, that's only four square miles, 4.5 square miles. But when you look at what's outside of the 4.5 square miles, all the way to McLean Avenue, all the way around, then you can see where the 40 is home. And we are five boroughs, it's Westchester County, Rockland County, Orange County, Suffolk County, and Butler, Mass. It's not Brooklyn, Bronx, Harlem, and none of that. And as you can see, or if you go down here, you can see they don't think our people are not even an existence anymore, but on the streets and fronts and dope streets. So you're coming out, I'm coming here from being away from 19 April, and I'm coming back to the center of the court after serving three times in three different colleges, two degrees, going travels all over the world in 1983 court, and returning back to the center of the court to rescue our people who are not getting any justice whatsoever. And you have a district court room over here and the district is for the city police that secures the district and attorney is a lawyer. So when we look at the court room that hasn't changed in 1992, and then you see that our parties are still winning the Federation Championship as New York State Public School Champions. And that's what we are not a charter school area in that side of town and the whole, this whole place right here, not only this that side of town, in which they trying to take over and bring these massive buildings, but then they remove our people because our people is the only ones who spend over 4.5 billion dollars a year. And that, everything they got comes from our social security numbers. Everything they doing is against the people who are already there incarcerated and taking social security number and use their I D numbers to give to people who don't belong in the country. And at one time when we were growing up here, if you wasn't from here, you couldn't even have a job here. And then you see, when you own a business, you don't need a job, you just need to know your business. And now they want you to go to school and get all of these degrees and then you come back with the degrees and you can't get a job because you need to open your own business there. And I'm R L R, a children on the move, and which they used to reach out through the I D A to get loans, to get all of this money from him. But when he came, he came with the city. So the city should have already provided money and ways for the city to be able to do what they do and not be able to go into the I D A or into our banking account where there's control office and there's a finance office. So you have the whole.
Mr. Ritter, I did you next to.
I know, I'm going in and I'm going in until you say something. So I'm going in until I finish.
Will you finish?
If you ain't gonna say nothing, I'm going.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, sir.
No, sir.
And then one more last thing.
No.
Is that they have to pay their taxes to us. We don't have to pay no taxes to them because they on our land and that's what defines it.
Can I put it into the record?
No, no. After, Mr. Sir, sir, say what you want to say. Sir, after the sign of speakers, after the sign of speakers speak, then our whole council will want you to speak. There are people who signed up. You can speak after.
No.
You said wait till the last person.
This one, I'm sorry. Um, thank you. My name is Nancy Bradley and I'm at 45 East Lincoln Avenue, Mount Vernon. And the subject here is the closure of the Mount Vernon tennis center. I wrote to Mayor Thomas last week expressing concern at this name regarding a piece I saw in the press about the imminent closure, which should have been March 1st, it's been delayed. And his office's response did nothing to alleviate my fears. The news report stated that there would be a temporary closure due to safety reasons in order to facilitate the work to be done on Memorial Field. I find that hard to believe since the tennis center had been operating for the past three years with temporary bathrooms in a place, and I must say that the management has been doing an outstanding job despite all the delays and setbacks with the completion of the facilities. We're still looking at a skeleton of an unfinished clubhouse which has sat as an eyesore for over three years. So I'm doubtful of any promises to have the center back in operation anytime soon. We have been making do and supporting Kayla in his mission to provide a place for high quality tennis and experience for all of us and the children of Mount Vernon. The management has gone above and beyond contractual obligations in reaching out to the community and operating, opening their doors to invite residents to participate in free recreational events throughout the year and especially over the summer. If you take the time to bring your family there, you will see what I'm talking about. We're very grateful for this tennis center and have much, and how much kids benefit from it. There is what I hope is a terrible rumor that the tennis center is to be closed and demolished to make way for an eight lane track as part of the new Memorial Field. Nowhere did I see an eight lane track on the proposed plans that were being shot and shown to us last year in the mayor's options for the new Memorial Field. It showed six lanes. Where are your vice plans if there are any? I haven't seen or heard anything of Sursumon Vernon site, the city of Mount Vernon site, there's nothing there. And just as enthusiastic as everyone else for the reopening of Memorial Field, I used that to be when it was dirt to walk everywhere. I've since gone across the street that column feeling like trespasser because they watch us because we're not supposed to be there. From my view of the regular plans, I don't see any way that an eight lane track can be built because it would mean demolishing part of the tennis court, the subside of tennis courts, if not the entire thing. The response I received from the mayor's office was that the plan is to reopen Memorial Field for the summer with turf field and tracks. They didn't give any details. The work to include excavation of mounds of dirt, crushing of large holders, and demolishing the grandstand. And here I quote, "Given the health and safety risks, the tennis center cannot remain open during the renovations. Its location places it literally in the middle of the work, flat, just feet away from the grandstand on one side and dirt path on the other." I used to be in construction. I've seen many projects completed where work was accomplished in occupied spaces or adjacent to with minimal disruption to the client's business, was still compliant with cautious safety standards. That grandstand, the covered part of that grandstand is many feet away from the stairs leading to the tennis center. I still haven't, I still haven't received any other specifics apart from what you said about the demolition. If the renovations of Memorial Field are to go through, I don't see any reason why a temporary barrier cannot flack the stairs down to the tennis courts. The tennis courts are elevated above the field and the stairs leading to the courts are far away from the grandstand as well as they have dirt mowed on the other side. It's a simple matter, but a temporary barrier, get, get the work done that needs to be done within there. The temporary bathrooms that are on the field currently can be moved. Everything that's there can be moved. The tennis courts are fixed, a lot of money was spent, there are gray courts, there are well worn courts outside of Mount Vernon. And spring summer is the busiest time at that tennis center with over 200 kids in some of the programs. There are. There are leagues that play out of there that Mount Vernon has to host their part of the annual league. I have nowhere to go, they closing, this is all scheduled through the USDA. All the summer programs are gonna be derailed. There is a, I should point this out, there is a program that Kayla is currently working on with a local nonprofit agency in conjunction with the USDA. Because of this uncertainty, it's halted, it's gonna benefit the kids here. I'm asking for you to look at this and to find out if you have plans, because they haven't been shared, not with the residents. I implore you to do whatever is necessary to keep the center open, we need it. It's one of the few places of recreation that we have here, and it's a beacon, and it's a community.
Erwin Billings? Good evening. Uh, in this stolen building, um, representing the city council of Second Elwood Avenue in New York. Uh, my subject is the evening in excessive and degenerate to tenement of state of Washington in Great City of Mount Vernon. It's been two-plus years since Mayor Thomas took office and the state of the city is already in despair. I was shocked in our files on the comments that are being alleged against the mayor Richard Thomas by the Attorney General Eric Hyneman. He ran off in the 30th year carrying a sentence of up to seven years and two charges for following a false instrument, one felony which carries a sentence of up to four years with misdemeanor of one year. Mr. Thomas has failed to file active campaign filing reports when he took office, leaving his other campaign leaders to stretch season ago reports. We now find out that Mr. Thomas has allegedly diverted his campaign funds to his personal account to pay for Christmas presents, including, not only to his vacation to Mexico, various restaurants, payments for vehicles, and payments for his residents, which is alleged by the Attorney General, who shows a lawful intent and reckless disregard for the law. This is a blatant abuse of power and not a technical oversight of the authority of Thomas's campaign management. This is the second mayor of Mount Vernon to be investigated by authorities for acquiring certain food, and it's embarrassing and disgraceful to our good city. I'm asking the concerned citizens to demand that Mayor Thomas resign effective immediately and that, and that council request for federal oversight into a new mayor can be elected by special election. Politicians continue to put their personal interest in the interest of the Democratic Party ahead of the citizens of Mount Vernon. Some have fallen behind on tax payments in desperate need of respect. I'm asking the council council to approve the comptroller's request and cutting the interest on taxes from 12% to 60%, including for those who are directly abusing their owners. Uh, I do believe that the city owes the taxpayers some relief and that, um, a municipal gift of cutting the interest rate for those that are falling behind is necessary. Um, the city of Mount Vernon is in great despair and our views past and present on the city council, and the mayor's office have continually failed the taxpayers in Mount Vernon. In March 2nd, 2018, a report from the local reports that according to Mark E. Maddox, the MTA Senior Director of Public Affairs, has said that next year's work of the Third Avenue Bridge is continued on Mount Vernon for the new payment of $3.2 million due June 30, 2017. If the city failed to pay $3.2 million, the MTA will not be obligated to replace the Third Avenue Bridge. The city is also expected to maintain the depth of the 10th Avenue Bridge and contribute $1.8 million to June 30, 2018. And if this payment is not made, the MTA is not obligated to replace the bridge. The Fulton Avenue Bridge is scheduled to be replaced by 2020. There are some examples of our officials ignoring the construction of the city, as you are aware. Memorial Field has been closed for over a decade. There are big corporations payable for $2 million to knock down the grandstands. And now the county investigators are trying to come up with the money to, um, to break back Memorial Field. Records from political committees have, between the current former mayor and the current formative council, the city of Mount Vernon has paid over $120,000 in fines to the Department of Environmental and sort of complication, running, and illegal development field. City officials agreed to pay $35,000 fine as part of the settlement with the D.C. They must perform a series of actions at 30 minutes to remove yards environmental threats to the river. Another $50,000 for not fixing the sewer line, which was former, which the former mayor, city council controller, worked out for over a decade. Meanwhile, city council officials wanted to decommission the bridges in the city while encouraging developers to bring thousands of units, which means more cars on our street to it than without telling the city that their environmental impact is that they actually look poor. Mount Vernon is the sixth densest city in the U.S. providing of just 40 miles. We need honest politicians in the work of the people above, political parties and individual businesses.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrett. Dorothy Fiorella? Leo Watson? Okay, I'll start with Councilwoman Parkinson for response.
Is Mr. Burris still here? I just wanna say thank you as we go to Mr. Burris for bringing his concerns to the council. And it's always, um, good to know that he's paying attention. Ms. Barrett, I understand the prayers that you express about the tennis center. You know, that, that situation for me is still in flux. Uh, I would like to see the tennis center remain and the issue be resolved within, uh, the requirements of what the county would like to see happen and of course with the city. So I'm hoping that we will have, um, some kind of collaborative result, resolution to this issue and the tennis center will remain. I do have some additional concerns that you did not raise, so I won't raise them here, but I, you know, you're free to raise them if you, um, when we speak, if you speak. But I do have some additional concerns about the tennis center. And just know that tennis is something that I've been involved in for a long time in the city. I mean, in 2009, when the tennis center was closing, I was, I led a group of parents to the county center to protest the closing of the tennis center. So I've been long involved in it because my children were involved in tennis. So I will continue to pay attention, and I do, I hope that, um, we can come to some kind of common resolve. Uh, Mr. Billy, um, I hear you, um, I hear the concerns that you've expressed, that you've often expressed, and, um, we have to, uh, continue to, at least I will, continue to focus on the needs of this community. Um, I'm refraining from weighing in on the issue related to, uh, to the mayor because, you know, what I have read is in the public domain, so everybody can read it as well. I wish the mayor well, and I too want to see the city thrive. I want to see the focus on the primary needs of all the citizens and residents of this community. So thank you for raising the issues that you have.
The tax cut.
Um, the tax cut is an important thing, we talked about it at our committee meeting, and, um, as a matter of fact, I was, um, I, I, I hope that I see it on the agenda this evening, but it's not. So I look forward to a conversation about that and where we go from here with, with, uh, the tax cut that the comptroller has requested on behalf of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Wallace.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always great to see everybody. Uh, Stephel Hamer, I did hear what you had to say. Um, thank you for always coming out. We, uh, we do have to, we do have to start first about some of this stuff with the veterans we have heard speaking about, uh, and I am going to, uh, kind of further dialogue. Regarding the tennis center, um, I don't wanna see the tennis center move. I don't wanna see the tennis center shut down. I don't wanna see the tennis center cut in half or anything. I've, uh, made my statement clear many times that I believe that it's already built. There's no sense of knocking out something that we spent so much money to build in the first place. Two, I really appreciate that tennis center being there because my nephew got a scholarship, four-year college, Mike Wallace, to go to, uh, college play for tennis.
Wow.
Uh, actually, and, uh, University of Rhode Island, I believe, he was one of the top number one players in that college.
Excellent.
So I know many of the other kids that got four-year college scholarships that otherwise would not have gotten to go to college. This tennis center puts a lot of our kids through college. We may not know about it because we focus on different sports at times, there's Razorback, football, and baseball, but there is a place here for the tennis as well. And I think it does bring a different sense of, uh, means and sports to our community and that just widens the variety of who we are as a people in this community. And I enjoy tennis myself, I play tennis, uh, and I think it would be a shame, you know, to even move that tennis center, shut it down at any time. Uh, and I think it should keep operating. One thing I wanna say too is I'm hoping that we can hurry up and finish building the rest of the tennis center, put a new rule on it. I don't know what the holdup is, I know we've had many conversations about it over the last two years. I still don't know why it's still in the same state. And being a contractor, I understand how long it takes in the private world because in six months it would have all been built. But we are working within the government realm and it seems like whatever, uh, the timetable seems to quadruple and continue to go on and on and on because of red tape and many other people's disagreements and just foolish bickering. So we need to get all of that stuff out the way and focus on getting the job done that we were elected to do. Um, and, uh, Erwin Billings, uh, always a pleasure to see you. I'm not gonna speak on the mayor's situation, I haven't spoke on it because I still believe everybody is innocent enough to prove them guilty. I stand that way because I know plenty of people that have been incarcerated that were innocent. So let's wait until the facts come out before anybody make any judgments and let's not rush to judgment on those particular things. Uh, regarding the tax, I too was hoping that I would see it on the agenda tonight. Um, we've discussed it many times. I think that the community and the homeowners need that actual benefit. I think we need that relief. And right now, there are many people that are on the verge of losing their homes. And we need to do whatever we can to keep people in their homes. We are not in the business of watching people go into poor culture to take over their homes and sell it. It is our job to see what we can do as a people to help all the taxpayers in this community. And many of the people I see, uh, in problems are seniors as well, they are on fixed incomes. Everybody else gets a raise, taxes go up, but this salary and social security remains the same. How do they expect them to pay these rising taxes? We need to figure out a way for that as well. So just starting with this, with what the comptroller has presented, is at least a start towards something of tax relief for the people of Mount Vernon who have deserved this for a very long time because we are overtaxed, uh, as a community in the first place. So I'm hoping that that changes as well, and I'm looking forward to whatever else the comptroller has to present that will, uh, alleviate and give the community some relief. So that's all I have to say, thank you again for coming out, and God bless.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Barrett.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I don't have too much to say, but I would like to say to all officials of Bartlett, I, I, the words were absolutely perfect. I could have written that myself, I'm surprised I didn't write that for you because everything you say is 100% autographed. Um, from the, um, the benefit of tennis to the benefit of Kayla, excellent group of people running that tennis center, um, all the disruption that they've been put through and how well they managed through that. I've said publicly, they didn't deserve to have that fear that their business that they care for so delicately is gonna be shut down. And I'm glad it wasn't shut down first. So you hit the nail on the head. I really think I wrote that for you, it's exactly what I've been saying all along. Um, there's actually, I don't believe that there's any reason that the tennis center needs to shut down while the sands are demolished. Um, the only thing we're doing is putting pain in Kayla's business and the, their people that work with them. So I'm a firm believer that the city of Mount Vernon is the one that did not meet their requirements. They should have finished that tennis center, I don't think, the steel was the hard part. So, and put that envelope around the building, I think was much easier. Um, and we should have continued with that. I think the mayor was right, well, I don't even know if he said it, but, um, we fail at changing plans from mayor to mayor. And I think the tennis center should have been completed and then a new plan for that field could have been put together as long as it got done. Um, and I've been saying that forever, let's finish the tennis center and then let's move on to the field because we have enough problems around the city that we can concentrate on, we don't need to create a problem that's already a problem. So, um, thank you very much, I know there's a lot of tennis people out there. Um, the, the Mount Vernon Knights are in the final four again, and that's great because we have a great basketball team. I'm five foot two and I can't play basketball, tennis maybe, um, maybe hockey, I don't know. But, um, it's, it's, and if folks have not been to the tennis center, I encourage you to go down there, walk in, walk to the bathrooms, visit Kayla, talk to them, hear what they've been doing for the last few years, what they've been through, and you'll find that they're just the sweetest people ever, and they'll do whatever they can for the people up there. And yes, there is free tennis, and yes, they open the doors, and yes, we have free tournaments. And like I've said before, Mount Vernon will change their heart about the tennis center when somebody's at Wimbledon or at the US Open playing tennis in there from Mount Vernon, then we're gonna love the tennis center. So I, I, you know, give that to Kayla, she needs to prove that. It's absolutely perfect what you said, um, more people need to realize that. So I'm not gonna comment on anybody else tonight, but, uh, Mrs. Bartlett, thank you very much.
Thank you. Like him. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Wallace.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank everyone for staying with us, and our mayors are staying with us, and thank you. To start with, seeing the mayor, I don't know if you still care, but, um, Councilwoman Wallace, if there are concerns regarding his veterans, um, services, perhaps that's something that we can direct a meeting? Um, and is it a matter that she can help with? That's something I'll call upon the people, and I, I don't know, I'd like to just try to, uh, or assist in that, if you might.
Marcia, Marcia Bartlett, uh, thank you so much for sharing your experience and expressing your value to the tennis center, lends to your life and obviously to some of the other communities. I am chair of the Human Resources Committee, and Memorial Field is part of my committee. The challenge with what we're facing now is that we have our agreement with Kayla and we have our
is that we have our agreement with Kila, and we have our agreement with the county and Royal Field. And unfortunately, they overlap, and that's where it gets complicated. So, while we sort out those matters with the county with respect to Royal Field, I will definitely support my colleagues' efforts to make sure that Kila is not harmed during this process. I don't believe that we need to lay blame on anyone regardless of whatever the state's going to do. They may not have anything. But, and I also believe we don't need to harm Kila or the community in this process. So, I have invited the mayor to debrief the council on a couple of occasions, and that has not yet happened. I understand that Commissioner Nigro is working diligently with the mayor on demolition of grandstands and removal of the mound. Those details are yet to be considered, but with the recent storms, I understand that that may have caused a delay. So, I'm looking forward to reviewing that information with them along with the county. The county has expressed their commitment to being a proactive partner with us to help us through the complications of sorting this out. With that said, I just wanted to make sure that the community understands that the city council is fully committed to working, collaborating with all stakeholders, with the mayor, with the comptroller, with the county, including our county legislators and our county executives, with Kila, and pursuing legal investigation. And before we even get there, we need to explore what our options are. And that hasn't been fully vetted. So, in the meantime, I'd like to request, respectfully request, some patience from the community. I know we want, it's been a long time coming, and we want answers now. But understand that the work is being done. We are looking into it. We are addressing it, and it is moving. And as information is available, it will be shared. So, in the meantime, thank you so much for your commitment and for keeping us abreast of your concerns. And we will definitely work together in the coming days. And we can say months. Erwin Billy. I want to address specifically the tax credit or the tax reduction that you brought up. We are working, both my colleagues, Mr. Griffith, Councilwoman Griffith and I, to fully vet the concerns that we have because municipal gifts are strictly prohibited by the New York State Constitution. So, we are not saying that we can't do an industry reduction. We're not saying that we can't do it. We're just still in the process of fully reviewing the provisions of the law and how we can do it to provide a benefit to the community. Furthermore, as a council, and me personally, as the, I specifically campaigned on making evidence-based decisions. This body has requested information from the comptroller's office to demonstrate the need, the scale of the need, so that we can work with her to find the right solutions for the communities, please. It's information the comptroller has yet to provide to this body. Until we receive that information, it's very difficult to vote on something that we can't, that we have no evidence for, if you're full evidence that she has in her office. I am committed, and I know my colleagues are as well, to be collaborative and to work with the comptroller. So, I will be sitting down with her to review our questions, to review the provisions of the law. I'm currently working, I have requested from NICOM, and there are lots of partners who do some research for us because I want to make sure that if we do something, especially if we're one of the first municipalities in the state of New York to do it, that we are careful and that we explore all of our avenues and the facets that go into the implications that this has on our tax room, on our budget, and on the community. So, we will be following up on that, and I'm sure in the next few weeks, you'll be seeing some more information. Thank you.
Madam President, can I just make one other comment?
Sure.
I just want to say, this past week, we had a number of storms. And I don't think the community fully appreciates the work that our DPW men and women carry out for our city. And we had a lot of trees down. Maybe in your neighborhood, you might have known one or two trees down. But Commissioner, maybe you could pine in on how many trees came down across the city, did you see them move? Do you have an idea for that number of people?
You have.
I know. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
It must be you.
I'm the president. That's not how it works.
Madam President, is it okay if I ask the commissioner?
No, but I can ask him. Commissioner, would you like to give us a point? We're not going to fight. Trust me. They don't want to fight with me. Up to the mic, trust me. They don't want to fight with me.
Yeah, I guess, Multimature is the first one to hear. This is not very fun, but their relationship is much better, still, once. Yeah, we had some issues. We had 14 trees down at Holmes themselves. You know, I can't count, maybe easily over 100 that might have sawed along the line, keeping on the electrical, visibility of all homes. Yeah, it was damaged. I mean, obviously, it was widespread, even on the second storm. So, two storms mattered, and the second one went down, didn't fall first time. But I have to admit, I get a lot of credit for our DPW, our tree crew, our department. They're probably, you don't know what you have here. We were working with really, we have one decent truck for the trees. But what they did, what we had, is nothing showed in there, to be honest with you. We're trying to push up that department so we can start trimming back the trees, invent this for the future. That's all maintenance. We just didn't have the ability to do that. That's something we can't handle this year. But what they did is, I would show a miracle, we had best tree moving. Khaled did not touch a tree, just so you know. Khaled did not come with one truck. There's all the reasons why it was Thursday, and it was Thursday time. But why we had so many Khaleds being here. Just knowing the mayor, myself, our department forced everyone to find out. And we actually threatened sanctions against the other areas to get some respect for the city. It was a daily fight, so don't anybody think that we weren't fighting. It was two phone calls, huge messages. Every municipality on the front, big group of phone calls that we screamed and yelled at. So, finally, you know, we got some friends. But yeah, it was about, we have, I'm putting up against anybody, DPW general or tree surgeon. They, I mean, they just got kicked off on the storm. So, we tried to negotiate it possible, so we apologized many ways. But we did a lot more than I can do in the city. And it goes through town, and West Houston County, and that is the answer.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. We're going to go through our results. I'm not going to comment. I will, it's good. It's been a long day. Legislation of Public Works? Why?
Number 16 is called for. Number 17 is called for. Number 27 is called for. Number 28 is renovation. Number 32 is being held. Number 33 and 37 offer information.
On the night of the day of me, this says, and board next one. Right, but so this is the first reading. This is not the second reading. Am I right? I'm sure with the title. This is the first reading. The title change is the first reading. It's not the second.
But then we must amend it on the floor at that moment.
Did you amend it?
Yes, we amended it.
We have to go back to the table.
Or we got to go back to the table.
Yes.
Because we caused it out.
I don't know how we caused it. Because if it was caused, that would be on this. If that was the case, it would be on this. It would be on this. And it's not.
We, we, we was, we brought that up the last time. We were discussing at that time. We made the change on the floor.
But it's not reflected. That made, I remember us discussing, but it's not reflected on the, we can vote on it. It's fine. That's fine. Is that to complete your report?
I have my report. I have four, four add-ons. Well, actually, five. It would be four anymore. Right, in a second reading. And that concludes my report.
What are your add-ons?
All four.
What four? The change order, your lawyers, leave of absence. What's the fourth one?
Leave of, one is the, which wasn't here, which I had requested for Commissioner Nigro because you guys wanted the streets that he was there.
We got it by email.
So, that was not placed on, so was that on? Right. Also, he ordered it for the Commissioner for Assistant to attend the seminar at the Law Department. That wasn't on. That is on now. Also, we requested that support technician Hans have a warning in the accident.
We don't use the name.
It's, it's, it's.
Oh, sad damn. Yes.
So, that is on the agenda. And also, to hire a legal attorney to office for legal apps.
And the county, we met with this county, we met with these people? It's attorneys, because I must have missed them. Where do these attorneys, did we meet them? Somebody chat with them? Who spoke with them on the phone?
Spoke in on the phone?
I'm talking about this, this attorney, Jacob, Jacob, whatever.
Yes, I got, I got called on to go to the conference call today.
Okay.
I believe.
It's fine. I'm, I'm, no, that's fine. Human resources, is that to complete your report?
And we have a.
It's fine. We moved on. It's been a long day. Did you like finish?
Human Resources?
I have ordinance for entrance permission for students for various programs. Now, they love to travel to Washington, so they can.
We are on girls. I know. It's been a long, you know.
Long day.
No, we're not.
Item number one is for information. Item number four is for information. I have item number 29 is called for. I have 30 for information. I have 31 is called for. And add-on, add-on, we have ordinance for the new bureau. So, that's on the agenda.
Public safety codes? That's it. It's in the, in the folder, the add-on. That complete your report or you have? Public safety codes?
So, item number three is called for. Item number eight is called for. Item number nine is a hold. Item number 11 is called for, and that was pending confirmation that position had been created in several circles, I believe. Item number 15 is on the agenda. Item number 18 is information. Item number 25 is on the agenda. Item number 26 is called for. Item number 35, 36, and 38 are for information.
Thank you. I was about to finish my report. Thank you, Councilwoman. Final support?
Oh, wait. I think I have to add. Yes, I have to add the item number four, which is right now listed on the legislation of public works, but it should ideally be.
It's legislation of public, okay. Thank you, Madam President. Find us a plan?
Thank you, Madam President. Items two boxes are for information. Item seven is on the agenda. Items 10, item 10 is being held. Item 12, 13, and 14, as well as 19, are for information. Item 20 is on the agenda. 21 is on the agenda. 22 is on the agenda. 23 is on the agenda. 24 is on the agenda. 34, 35, 39 are for information, and these are on the board.
Thank you. Now, we'll go through legislation, legislation of public works.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. I have ordered, authorized the mayor to issue change order number one, PCI, as we have talked. Amount of 371,173,7 cents sold.
Second. All the question?
I have a question. So, in the committee meeting, I asked for breakdown of what this constitutes as change order, what actually constitutes a change order. I'm going to say I'm thankful that we received list of the rules that have been paid. But I'd like to see what actually amounts to that, that's saved right there. For any, for the, for the. Okay.
Yes, my question. I know we were, everybody was requesting or whatever the streets, so did everybody get the email?
We got the streets, but I don't, I don't know, well.
We were told, I thought we were told that the council won. The commissioner gave them these actual streets that were being paid. And if the commissioner did, he'd be there. I think that's why we see the, yesterday, we had.
But in the meeting, I also, sorry. So, in the meeting, I also requested that we put the breakdown. Remember, we had the discussion because I know that what was said was that it's chips money. And my, the, my sentiment was that it didn't matter where it wanted to originate from. My concern was that it was being spent judiciously. So, I wanted to see the breakdown. So. So I wanted to see the breakdown, so, um, thank you.
Commissioner, a point of clarification. Do you have a breakdown question? Is that? I don't know what my answer today.
Uh, the answer, that would be, you know, how much yield for, how much yield per square foot of the street? I mean, there are, we have to go back and, we've got to be taking some very street, we've had to expect to put the tickets very low. And so we have to go back and revisit that, support that as a dating contract that we have for the city. I monitor it myself. I make sure that the yield is, you know, an inch and a half, two inches over way, or each street that was presented. And it's certain punishment will take that. We did due diligence at the time, but needs further review. It's obviously available, which is going to take us a day or two in the next meeting, this is possible. That's, that's not an issue. The change order here that you see tonight is due to the fact we added slot eleven, which they are probably one of the nicest lots in Westchester County. That did come through D P W in our streets, or we, or chips money. Change there, you see, is that the police department handles the lots. We were able to utilize the limited contract at a much lower price to get that lot done, saving about one hundred fifty thousand dollars by adding it into our contract. So there's where the change is, that some money had to be allocated, the switch over from police department budget to mine ours, which is over, and discuss control of George and all that level of events. So that's where the change is going to change.
Okay, thank you.
That's available, it's big, that's, I mean, that, is that, that's it.
Council, does, does that? Well, Madam President, I, I would just say that.
Is your question?
It is, that's it. So I, I'd just like to say that, um, you know, I, I'd like to see you one-on-one answer to it too, that's all. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I was trying.
Are you prepared to move forward with the legislation?
I'm prepared to move forward. I have a, uh, a question for, uh, Commissioner. Which is basically, Commissioner, if it's possible, that we're gonna hold on this, that after you can give us a breakdown of eleven, so that we can have an understanding, so other than, no, how. Okay.
We can, we both, we're all, we're all, we're all, we're all, you know, from, from scale, from the, from the streets, and we're all, we're all, okay, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll, roll anyone? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte? Councilwoman Ferguson?
I abstain. Because, because, um, I do not have that information that I think would make me an impor of the legislation. Thank you.
Councilman Griffith?
Yes, or yay.
Councilwoman Wallace? Yay. Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an order that's requiring permission to one Assistant Corporate Counsel to attend a seminar, so.
Second. One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance authorizing, I have an ordinance authorizing computer repair and maintenance for technician Hans Marshall. A one-year legal absence without pay, so.
Second. One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance authorizing City Council to retain the firm of Jacob Witz and Rubitz L L P for land use matters, so.
Second. One question?
On the, on the question, is this going to be for all land use matters for timeframe, or you could?
And who spoke to him?
The councilwoman, explaining.
Somebody?
Yes. So, um, may I ask you?
Yes, please.
So, this is particularly pertaining to the Article seventy-eight, that seventy-eight that we have filed. We filed four Article seventy-eight. We did defiling, how they were filed, um, it was rejected by the, by the court. So they asked us to refile them, and suggested we get, um, legal support to make sure that we are, um, we are, um, meeting the requirements of the court. And so that, that there was, um, our deputy clerk was able to help me, um, identify a law firm. I spoke with them this afternoon, and I reached to Councilwoman Wallace as my co-chair. And we, we, you know, had questions. They, they said they would be able to make the remedy remedies to the Article seventy-eight. And serve the, the petitions by Friday, because we're up against a hard date. Um, because fifteen days after the filing of the Article seventy-eight, the remedy must be complete if it's, if, um, if it's rejected by the court. So, uh, this law firm, um, came, um, you know, we spoke with them. And, um, Councilwoman Wallace, Dorate, also reached out to another law firm. Um, and had some success. She was not able to participate in the discussion that we had, but she and I had a discussion, um, prior to this meeting. And she, she also has a law firm that she's reached out to that, um, has indicated that they can help us as well. But because the timeframe is so short, um, you know, that's why this is on here. Additionally, what I asked was that, um, I could file, say, because the clerk at the city, um, is in the county office. And said that if I go to the law library, that they will help me to, uh, prepare the petition, and he will help me to file the petition on behalf of the City Council. If I brought the, um, the hard copy documents to my clients.
So that's an option. Glad you said that. Councilwoman, did that, I'm sorry. Councilwoman, did that answer your question?
Uh, I'm sorry. Not fully, but I'll, 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 I'll listen to more comments, and then maybe the last one.
Councilwoman Dorate?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so I just want to, that, I, we, we, our, our, um, they have suggested, and perhaps you want to consider, uh, they can provide some assistance to help us cure our E-HI. By tomorrow or Friday, the latest. Uh, and that would give us time to explore, and sit down, uh, to meet this law firm, as well as, um, the one that Councilwoman Ferguson's working with, so. So I would like to, I got two weeks to explore that option, that's fine, before we move on this issue.
Okay. So, we're, we're on a question, but, okay, I'm not gonna support this, not because I don't support the Article seventy-eight per se. But this is not how we, as a body, get a counsel. We meet the people, they come in. I mean, for three, I don't even know about the, well, no, I saw you in there, so I didn't come in, because I do. Would constitute a forum, but I, I can't support it, even though I support the action, because the process was.
Okay. So, Madam President, just one question. Um, how do you feel about, um, the, the, the option, which is for me to go and file, go say, um, in person?
I don't think that's a good option. I think we should have an attorney do it, because then, you want that to. And still, even still, this attorney gonna be hired, because it has to go to Board of Members. Even, and, you know, that's not gonna be for a month, because the board is not, I don't know. We, we're on a question.
I have one, one, one question. Um, it says in section three, if you will, it says the funds to pay for the service you're behaving in escrow.
But that, I think that's my right. I would think the fund, I would think the funds have to come from the council.
Right, that's what.
Oh, was it corrected somewhere?
No, it's in.
Okay. Wow, let's do, let's do this. Let's come back to this, and have our, our attorney, um, make the correction on it. With the budget code, the council's budget code is A one oh one. Oh, there, the, so I guess you start the one. I don't know, I'm sorry. We can vote, and then we'll, we'll amend it on the floor, or. Who has, you have the original, who has the original? You have it, uh, Councilman? That's the change. We'll, we'll do the roll call, and if, if, with the amended. Please. She needs the actual legislation. Is that the original? Oh, you haven't, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, she hasn't, so she hasn't, that's true.
So, Council President, is the, are you instructed with cooperation, Council to correct it, or Council President?
Well, she can correct it, and he, the initial, he just, I forget how it goes. It's been a long day.
I think it's best that he initially.
Okay. All right, roll call?
Roll call on the, uh, number four. And number four has been amended, as it would like so. Yes.
Read section three, if you amend the four, please, on.
Uh, section three has been amended, uh, to reflect funds to be paid for outside legal services shall be made available in A one zero one zero dash four zero five.
What time do you come, roll call?
A one zero one zero point four zero five.
Which is our outside contracted services on. Okay, roll, roll call?
Okay, I, you, you, the roll call is on, on the amendment, because they've motioned to amend, but just amending the legislation, it's a priority. Amending the legislation that is a priority. Councilwoman Duarte?
Just a point of clarification, we wrote on the amendment, we want to.
Well, technically, you wrote on the amendment, this is why I asked you that question. If you was gonna do it, you should have made a motion to amend the original motion, because you're changing it.
So just went through a motion and questioned.
We're drawing that off, so, just a move to amend current motion, to say, all the one, all the one, whatever. So move to amend number four. Okay. So move to amend all four motion. Any amendment, Councilman? So, for the record, be very clear, read what the amendment should be, because you're now moving it. Okay. Section three, funds to be paid for outside legal services shall be made available in A ten ten dot four zero five. Great, says second amendment, amendment?
Second.
Roll call amendment, Council President?
One question? One amendment? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
This is on the.
This is on the amendment, any vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland? Amendment.
You want to, well, actually, I'm a name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm a, I'm the amendment, I'm a name on the legislation, so.
I'm the amendment, okay, can I, uh, do the legislation?
Okay.
Number four, and all, and order is authorizing the City Council to retain the firm of Jacob and Rubitz L L P for land use matters, so.
Second. One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
I abstain.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Nay.
Human Resources?
Hold on, right.
I have, uh, thank you, Madam President. I have an ordinance granting permission to students from various programs of the National New York to travel to Washington DC, so moved.
Second.
One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Public safety codes?
Thank you, Madam President. An ordinance requesting permission to create and fund a new position of fire inspector within the fire department, so moved.
Second.
One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Yay.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Uh, I have an ordinance granting permission for the fire deputy chief to attend the training course from eight twelve to eight nineteen, so moved.
Second.
One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Yay.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have ordinance granting permission for four members of the police department to attend a wiretapping and electronic surveillance class from three twenty-eight to three twenty-nine, so moved.
Second. One question? One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President?
Uh, final answer, final?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to distribute a request for qualifications for a qualified planning consultant, so moved.
Second. One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Having ordinance authorizing the mayor to.
Is your mic?
Sorry. Having ordinance authorizing the mayor to obtain consulting services to conduct an area-wide study through a request for proposals, so moved.
Second. One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance authorizing the Department of Planning and Community Development to accept funds and place in escrow. So moved.
Second. One question? Roll, roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance authorizing an extension for all four letters for the purposes of legal property compensation, so moved.
Second. One question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President?
Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance demanding part two of chapter two sixty-seven of the law. So moved.
Second. One question? Roll, roll call?
Council, Council, Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Griffith?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilman Griffith. Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance requesting permission to create and fund a position of senior planner and associate planner within the Department of Planning and Community Development, and to transfer funds, so moved.
Second. Second. One question?
Madam President?
Yes.
Where, where is the funds gonna come from?
Where, where is the funds gonna come from?
Who are you asking?
The chair. Yes. That's the chair, the chair. Uh, Councilmember?
The general.
How much?
One fifty-five.
Okay.
Shouldn't that be, is it...
Did you have a question, Councilman? Any other questions on the motion? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Abstain. Because I'm, I'm not sure where the money is going to be coming from, but I'm sure. Thank you.
Councilwoman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copa?
Aye. Legislation and public works?
I have a resolution of the Mount Vernon City Council to amend section fifteen of the Mount Vernon City Charter, so moved.
Second. One more question? One more question? Councilwoman?
Thank you. So, this, uh, okay, is that, well, point exactly are we going on?
It's the second reading of term limits.
Okay, I mean, we're on the second reading and done. What is the next step?
Uh, corporate council?
Is it local law or not?
Yeah, uh, well, it would be a local law. Um, it would be given to the mayor for a public hearing.
But it's not local law. It says resolution. It's not the same. Well, it's not a debate. I'm reading. It says resolution. Not local law. Well... You know, I wanna go home.
Council, Council President, can we, uh, does this need to be amended? Can we hear from corporate council to find out? So we have to make sure we are correct, so that Councilwoman Duarte can take in some clarity on this as well.
Well, first, um, this ordinance was not presented by the law department initially. Um, secondly, I believe there was some discussion about the title, whether or not it would be the or, I'm sorry, local law at the last meeting. I cannot speak to whether it was actually, um, completed or by the clerk's office or something. And, um...
So who did do this presentation?
Who did not?
Where did it come from? If the law department didn't do it, where did it come from?
The...
Who said it?
Nobody. I have to give them the... Who did it? Who did you want it? No, I know, I didn't signal, that's why I asked the question.
Which is not necessarily indicative of...
No.
But this particular one is not complete.
Of which one?
Fifteen, last one. Yeah, the last one. So if the record indicates that it was amended on the floor, um, either orally or manually, then it would suffice to call this a second reading.
Okay.
It's really the will of the council when it considers it at this time.
Yeah, but Council President, I don't think she finished fully adding, uh, addressing Council Duarte's, uh, question, which is where does it go next?
To be honest, the clerk's office handles, um, the first and second reading and also local law procedures. Um, I believe what the clerk can give is accurate. It goes to the mayor's office for a public hearing and then the local law is registered in state.
It doesn't have to go to her firm?
No, not all, um, local laws go to her firm.
But this is a change to the charter.
It says a change to the charter, but I would prefer not to speak to it.
Gotcha. She said she would prefer not to speak to it, uh, based on potential conflicts. Any other questions? Roll call? Oh, well, well, everybody knows on the note. I don't support it. We have to turn on the state called elections. Roll call?
Roll call of number thirteen. Councilwoman Duarte?
Abstain. I'm...
I'm abstained. Do you have a choice for your expression?
I'm, I'm still not clear, um, on the process and, um, my understanding is that it's an initiative to vote for our government. If that's not the case, then, um, I, I'd like some more time.
I believe it does go directly.
But it hasn't been voted on, too, as I said. Okay. Um, continue with the roll, I mean, because we're on the vote now, so, continue with the roll call.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Griffith?
No.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copa?
Nay.
Is there any other business to come before this esteemed body?
Councilwoman? Yes, Ma- 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 Madam Chair, I just wanted to raise again, in the public domain, the issue of the tree ordinance and where that stands.
Councilwoman Griffith?
I will not comment because I commented last night and I quite honestly don't understand.
I think it was Monday.
Well, Monday. I don't understand why the same question keeps coming up when I've already described the complications that this body has to the tree ordinance as it stands. The other council members, the new council members, had the availability to review the tree ordinance and nobody has yet to come back to me with their concerns or with their positive approach to the tree ordinance. We just had a major storm and many trees did major damage to people's homes and to cars, and it could have taken people's lives. So the concerns that I have had, and quite frankly, the mayor has had, the buildings department has, the legal department has, the tree ordinance as it stands needs to be amended. I purposely waited for the new council to come on, to be able to review it, so that we can adjust it, so that we can pass the tree ordinance. But honestly, I'm tired of being questioned about this without anybody chiming in on the dialogue or the content of what is in there now. So we can easily, in committee, review the tree ordinance and come to a, a, a unified decision as to how we're going to move forward. But I am not going to move forward the tree ordinance as it stands because it is flawed and we have issues in this city with that tree ordinance as it stands. And I've said that many times. So I'll be happy to talk to the council about the details of the tree ordinance and nobody has come to me with that yet. And I purposely waited for this esteemed body to review the tree ordinance in detail, so that we can review the complications with that tree ordinance as it stands. I made it clear. We can discuss it in the meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
And I, and I wanna say, that's the last time I talked about this tree ordinance. Quite honestly, we brought this, I brought this tree ordinance to the floor of this body. It was passed, it was vetoed by my mayor. And people seem to forget that. It was passed by the council body. It was then vetoed. People seem to forget that. I work with legal on this and there are issues that we need to go over. Nobody from this council, the past council, has gone into detail with about this tree ordinance. I'm the only councilperson that went in detail on that tree ordinance. When you're ready to read it and discuss it with me, I'll be happy to discuss it with you and bring forward the concerns that this body has. And that's all I'm gonna say about this tree ordinance. I'd want this tree ordinance is to storm. People have to be careful of trees because they will kill you. And this, but this city is not ready to have a buildings department inspect trees in time before they kill somebody. And we sold out with the storm. So I thank you for continuing to ask, but I would like to have dialogue about the tree ordinance as the representatives gave to you personally. And I'm tired of being asked about it.
Madam Chair, may I? So I'd like to say, am I hearing from you?
I didn't respond to it.
Oh, sorry, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
So I'd like to, I, I, you know, I'd just like to clarify, Councilwoman Wallace, that what I've learned from you is a commitment...
That's Councilwoman Griffith.
Councilwoman Griffith. Yeah, is, is that commitment from you that you will be bringing into the board committee for, for discussion? Is that what I'm hearing? So, because what I'm saying is that trees, I have the floor. What I'm saying is that trees are an asset in our community and should be treated as such, just like the public funds. The trees are part of the public trust. So I am prepared to discuss it, Councilwoman Wallace, um, Griffith. Sorry.
May I, Madam?
No. Roll, did we vote? Oh, we were talking about something else.
So moved.
We were, oh, yeah. Sure, I got it.
Just, just to clarify, the record in error by Councilwoman Griffith in his statement, I did read the actual tree ordinance. I did make changes and suggestions to the tree ordinance as we had passed the tree ordinance. So, the question, the, the, his statement of only he has read this tree ordinance, uh, is incorrect.
No, I, Councilman, I believe that he said, I don't think that he said only he, he said commented. You didn't say just read.
I, I, but I commented on it as well and I made changes to the tree ordinance. I thought the tree ordinance would go on mine now. And I've had conversations with many of the people from the ordinance.
Yes.
So, you know, I don't know where it's at.
Okay. Okay. I'm very corrected. Councilwoman Wallace is correct. Councilwoman Wallace did go over the tree ordinance, did comment on it, so I stand corrected. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else?
Yeah. That we could not have commented if we weren't here.
Would you hear now?
Waiting for you to break.
I entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing further. I, I would be, uh, remind you all who are available this Saturday, uh, Miss Marie Williams' memorial service at Massillon Church at eleven AM, for his basketball team at Broom County in Biggerton at two thirty PM, and church for all of us on Sunday. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call on adjournment.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Griffith?
Nay.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Copa?
Yea.
She's thinking of adjourn.